Ordinance creating the City of Crixton's Housing Trust Fund.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved, Your Honor.
The call is seconded, Your Honor.
Good. Tim and Clayton, thank you. Discussion. Anything? Roll call, please.
Claude?
Aye.
Menard?
Aye.
Hibma?
Aye.
Jordy?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Alt?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Item three point zero two is the second and final reading of an ordinance amending section thirty point zero two B and C of the City of Crixton City Code.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve this resolution? Thank you. Don, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Henry. Thank you. Discussion. Hearing none. Can I roll call, please?
Claude?
Aye.
Menard?
Aye.
Hibma?
Aye.
Jordy?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Alt?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Item three point zero three is a resolution adopting the proposed twenty twenty five tax levy in preliminary twenty twenty five general fund budget and setting a public budget meeting date.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved, Your Honor.
We've got Delane and Clayton. Thank you. Discussion.
Mayor, members of the council, uh, the numbers that we have in place, I was in contact with Sam at the county today. Uh, one item is that our net tax capacity in the last thirty to forty-five days since we originally got our preliminary numbers from the county, our net tax capacity has again been reduced. Uh, his explanation was primarily, uh, homestead exemptions that have been filed. Uh, we have gone from four point nine six two, uh, million as our tax capacity and our new tax capacity is four point eight five million. Uh, so that does reduce that amount by about seven thousand dollars or s- seventy thousand dollars in tax capacity. So for every one percent, what we did have for four point four forty-nine thousand, six hundred, that takes us down below the forty-nine thousand mark, takes us to about forty-eight, nine, forty-eight, eight, somewhere in that ballpark, uh, for every one percent. Uh, as this is a preliminary, uh, request and per statute, it is a not to exceed. As we went for, as we've been moving forward through the budget, we did have an assumed interest income of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from our investments, from reserves. That number did come from, Ellers is their best guess estimate for twenty twenty-five. As a not to exceed, the proposed levy is four point four five two, four million, four hundred and fifty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy-one. As that preliminary levy, that is increased from our working numbers prior. Uh, that was in the four point two range. The rationale for that is this is a not to exceed. We can change. And it would tie, I believe that it would tie our hands unnecessarily in relying on that interest income. It is not a good practice to fund operations from reserves. Uh, it should be a rare occasion. So this four point four five is the budget that we've been discussing all along. However, it has replaced that capital interest or that reserve interest with levy dollars uh, as a best practice. As we move forward through the process, the council can direct in either way. I can work the budget however the council directs, but I didn't want to tie our hands prematurely uh, in reducing that and making that decision for this body. I wanted the body to be able to have those options to them. That being said, all of the budget numbers are as discussed throughout our month, throughout our departmental meetings over the past month. Uh, and I am currently working on a presentation for council, uh, for our next meeting that will identify basically where we are, how we got there and how we can fix moving forward. Uh, in a rational way, I've got compare, I'm working on comparisons with like-sized cities and similar amended cities. Uh, as we go forward on that. If council has any other questions, I am available.
I have a couple of questions from last week's meeting. So that, um, that, um, vehicle that the fire department is purchasing, that's coming out of re- the reserve now, that's restricted reserve, so that can't be moved.
It's under designated reserves, sir.
Designated reserves.
Yes, it is, it has, it was previously designated for a fire vehicle. Uh, it's not restricted. Uh, restricted being that if there's a statute or a law that says we must spend it in a certain way, that is not the case. This is simply designated reserves. This body in the past has designated those monies for fire vehicle.
And then, um, on the garbage, um, can issue, did we budget for like, I, um, heard Morgan say we should budget, what, what was the amount that we came up with?
Well, that's why I asked them to put out a survey to see how many people are interested before we.
Right now, right.
I was listening to the, the meeting and the amount that they, you know, we budgeted, like, somebody did say that we budgeted.
For a hundred, a hundred houses.
So hopefully we get that spent by the end of this year.
Oh, we do, and then, uh, the number that we had identified for next year was a hundred thousand. Uh, Chuck and I are looking at different options. Uh, we did identify, he spoke with waste management, uh, this afternoon and it was identified, their, one of their procurement officers that identified they have a different source that provides an equivalent product. However, as opposed to ninety-four to ninety-six dollars per item, it comes down to about sixty-six to sixty-eight dollars per item. So we're looking at about a thirty, thirty to thirty-five percent decrease in those costs. Uh, so we're investigating that. The information that we have, we have seventy-five households to date that have signed up and shown interest. We have, in addition to that, we have a landlord that Chuck said he believes controls approximately fifty rental properties in town that wants all of his residents on can service. Uh, with those numbers and the discussions that Chuck and I have had with very, the two providers that service our region, our numbers are approaching that at which they would consider coming in and taking on the service for us. Uh, Chuck and I are still evaluating that because our, our equipment is getting old. Our garbage truck was slated to be replaced next year, but we're holding off on it. And if we go put an RFP out for outside services and this is one where, again, we're still trying to firm up numbers so that we can give the council good information. Uh, if we outsource, the costs would be very similar as in-house and either waste connections or waste management, those are the two primary carriers. We have one hauler in the region that is going out of business. Uh, but both of those carriers have identified that our costs would be similar and we would not need to have incur the expense of purchasing the bins because they would provide them to the residents. It would still be billed through our utility bills just like it would be should we provide the service. And so we're just trying to get some more firm numbers to know which avenue we can make a recommendation to council uh, and provide the information so that we can get directions to where to go.
Well, the other thing is, um, as, as far as staff, that, I mean, I, right now you're servicing about two hundred people up with the bag system, is that correct? I don't think, I don't think if, if, if the numbers increase, which I think they're going to with the, um, canisters, are you gonna be able to handle with the same staff that you have?
The canisters are generally considered to be more efficient, uh, particularly with hydraulic arms.
You're making more stops a day. I mean, I think every, I think your current guys are driving up and down the streets looking for yellow bags.
Yes.
And so they're gonna, when this happens, they're gonna have to.
Yeah, it would be, it would definitely be more organized. Uh, one of the questions that we had asked of the providers is if that is the avenue chosen by the city to move down, their anticipation would be that they could cover the entire city in a one-day route. Uh, with, with one of, with one of their trucks.
So in the case, then, if we do an outside.
Pardon?
If we do an outside company, how long will that be contracted for?
That, because they come in for a year and then they come back second year and want goo goo bucks.
And norm, in my experience, most outside contracts are normally three years in duration. And at the end of that point, you can either discuss a renewal. Most of them have a renewal option, or you can go out for an RFP again. It's been my experience with several governments that under normal circumstances, they want to keep the business. The option that they have for renewal is usually lower than what you come back from bid. Uh, the City of Groveland denied a renewal, uh, for their garbage hauler, uh, which was a six percent increase over their current contract. Uh, the city declined the offer. They went out for bid. Uh, they ended up with the same hauler because then the bid, when they went out for bid, they were still again the lowest bid. However, instead of the six percent offered renewal, their bid was twelve percent. So it, there are no guarantees. Uh, so now in.
So the.
On the other end of the spectrum, at the end of three years, they may offer an eighteen percent renewal. We may go out for bid and have no, no bidders. There's always a risk.
So what are the thing with getting an outside, um, um, company to come in and do it? The, the residents of Crixton still want, they're still passionate about the spring cleanup and the fall cleanup. So that would be something that we would have to still, cause the, the outside vendors won't do that. So we would probably have to do that on our own if, if that's the route that we decide to go.
Not necessarily, sir. When I was in Madison Lake, we had an outside contractor and it was part of the contract that they would provide fall and spring cleanup. The caveat to that was is that there would be some items that would construe an additional charge because I'm not familiar, I'm not sure about Polk County, but in Blue Earth County, the landfill had additional charges for what they considered hazardous waste appliances, free on, uh, televisions and things of that nature.
Yeah.
And so they would pass those costs.
If I remember correctly, they, they, a while ago, I mean, Dale and Clayton might remember they, what, did they once look out outside sources for garbage companies?
Yeah, we looked at, uh, Countrywide. And I think they were, I can't remember the length of the contract, but I know after the contract, they were quite a bit higher than the original.
And then they wouldn't do the, um.
They would do spring or fall cleanup and they wouldn't do, uh,
Who does?
branches.
Who does East Grand and Grand Forks? Because they do spring and fall cleanup.
City does East Grand.
Okay, and then who does Grand Forks? Do we know? Because I, I mean, I just know that they just posted that their, their dates for spring.
Just something, just something to put on your radar because I know that's, a lot of people of Crixton are very passionate about the, having the cleanup weeks.
Yes, Chuck and I, those are topics that Chuck and I have been discussing. Uh, one of the items that we've been discussing is how to control the hoarding of garbage for spring and fall cleanup.
I mean, it's kind of funny because we, me and my wife took something out to the, the landfill and it was a construction thing. We took it in and paid our fifty-six cents, I think it was. I'm like, now we could have held on to this for a whole year and waited for spring cleanup and then done it then. But it's like, it's very cheap to take something to the landfill.
Chuck, Chuck has identified to me that we have residents that he, that in the past, the city had a fifty-bag limit for spring and fall cleanup. They reduced it to twenty bags because they noticed that there were several homes in the city that did hoard their garbage in the garages for spring and fall. And they got significant pushback from those re- those locations when they lowered it to twenty bags. Uh, so that, yes, that's one, another aspect of the discussion that we're trying to work with.
That's the only questions I have from last week's meetings.
If we do work with an outside contractor, will we have to make the upgrade on our truck with the lifting arm?
No, we would not.
We would, so we, there would be a significant savings there, even though we've set aside that.
We've set aside, yes, sir, we've set aside the, the funding. However, that would be a forty thousand dollar expense that we would not incur. Um, the timing would be of the essence on that. Uh, we do have in motion, again, the list, the interest list. It is now, it has now become an expected change uh, for several, for many residents, seventy-five to a hundred and twenty-five residents. So it has become an expect, expectation at this juncture. Uh, our plans or our thought process is we do not want to remove the ability of residents to take their own to the transfer station. It's not going to be a mandated item by any stretch. Uh, it's just simply, we're looking at the options to modernize our collection.
So when, I mean, to that point, right, of that could free up forty thousand if we went somewhere else, right? Um, are we considering putting out this RFP and trying to get some sort of idea before we have to set?
We are.
Final number?
I spoke with Chuck this afternoon, uh, about his thoughts on the matter and it, my, I would like to have an RFP presented to the council in October. Uh, so that we can then put that out. By putting out an RFP, we're not obligated to take an option, but it does provide us great information as far as what the market has available.
So one of the, one of the things I'm a little disappointed in is we put this in a budget last year. So why are we finally considering to take action now this October? I mean, why, we, Chuck had the marching orders last when we did our budget. So did he, I wanted to know why he chose to either ignore or hope it went away, it feels like. But why, why it takes so long to put the, I know you were here, but that would be a question I'd like.
Do you wanna put Chuck on, the chopping block on that?
What?
Just saying Chuck messed up or what?
Put the money in the budget, so why?
Well, I also, uh, can we just verify whether or not Chuck was even on board with the plan?
Yeah, I mean, Chuck, Chuck was brand new too, like.
Chuck just started in.
Somebody, but I mean, like.
Well, okay, like, you're, you're looking to blame somebody.
I'm not looking to blame anybody. I'm saying we put it, we put it in the budget last year.
Cause he didn't know. He, he was brand new. He was just trying to get stuff in right. And now you're saying, okay, Chuck did this, why are we doing that?
All right, let's move on, please.
I'm not doing this. Like, no, stop putting people on the top.
Let's move on.
Settle down there, little bit, Henry.
Okay, further discussion?
I, the concern I have is, when we checked into this three or four years ago, the cost of an outside contractor was decent at first and then over the next period of time, like, it like doubled or tripled.
Well, I guess we just.
Just went against the whole thing that it was gonna be enough cost because more than running.
We, we can put in and negotiate our ending terms, meaning we can say we do not want an auto renewal, which would be something I'd recommend that we put in every agreement, right? Like, so it doesn't just auto renewal at this like ten percent increase. We can also request, and they can always deny this, right? But like, put in a request that when we come up for renegotiations, it will not exceed X percent.
Yeah.
That is an option to ask.
And another item that can be, that is a tool, it's a negotiating tool. All contracts in the state of Minnesota are public record. And it's not going to be, there's not, I would, I would anticipate that there is not going to be an unjustified random increase because these carriers know that we have access to statewide contracts. They, the League of Minnesota Cities can provide us with information on the rates and what their gen, their increases are generally tied. Every negotiation I've been involved with, I've been involved directly with three negotiations with outside contractors. They have always been directly tied to inflation and fuel costs. Every request for an increase has always been tied to one of those two things. It's infla, direct towards inflation and fuel costs. Then the fuzzy portion of it is, is that inflation gauged by the CPI? Is it gauged by the regional? Is it gauged by the overall inflation? Is it engaged, which mark of inflation do they use? But in every case, their requests have always been tied to the data.
I mean, and also to that point though, right, like that inflation, if we were to do it ourselves, would also increase on our end, which then we'd have to figure, I mean, that, that rate going up for inflation is gonna go somewhere, right? Like, that's gonna either affect us or a third party.
Yes, we just wait for the, the bids come back and see where we're at to here in October and make a decision then.
Yeah, I would, I would ask to go for the RFP in October. I would not expect, anticipate having numbers back until November. But still well within the budgetary framework.
Okay, further discussion on the twenty-five proposed tax levy?
So my question is, is what would that percentage be? Just flashbacks of last year?
Uh, the levy, the preliminary levy last year was four point nine million.
What percentage?
Which was a sixty-nine percent increase. This is a twenty-six point five percent increase over last year as a prelim, preliminary levy. And the, I can run a number very quickly here.
And is that taking into account raising water and sewer rates or is that something we'll?
Those are separate funds, ma'am.
Okay.
Apologies, my, there's some embedded formulas that are going goofy. Based on the new tax capacity. We bring, the preliminary rate would be ninety-three percent of tax capacity. However, I do not anticipate being anywhere near that rate. Our current rate is sixty-eight percent of tax capacity. I, I anticipate with the reduction in the net tax capacity being in the sevens as opposed to the nines. Again, this number is worst case scenario.
So question on this, not asking us to like go on to discuss whether it should be in or not, because that's for other meetings. But is that including that hundred some thousand for the Golden Link, which I believe had been in the original?
It does.
Okay.
No, the only reductions that have been made in this budget are the numbers for the police wages. Uh, the, the police union and I have reached, uh, a rough estimate of where we believe we are. And we have reduced the police wages by the amount of the, down to the maximum of the estimate of where we believe we're gonna be presenting to the council.
Okay. And then this includes the swimming pool?
Pardon?
This includes the swimming pool at the three hundred some thousand?
It includes the pool, it includes the hundred thousand dollars for the trash canisters. It in, it includes all of the items that we've discussed previously. So there, depending on council direction, there is room to move.
Okay, and then I may have missed this. I feel like there was a discussion when I was gone. Um, but I could be making that up in my head. Last year, we had people coming in and requesting grants that we had.
Yep, everybody has the opportunity to have community.
And has that happened? Did they put those in? Did we discuss those?
We do have those in place. That is part of, one of those is the Golden Link.
Yeah.
Uh, we, we've received one other, uh, from Tri Valley.
That's it?
And I believe Tina has one other, but all of them are accounted for within this budget and as part of council, just council spending.
And Scruffy Tails hasn't requested many?
Pardon?
Scruffy Tails?
Scruffy Tails has not requested anything beyond their normal contract at this juncture. We have met, the chief seller and I have met, uh, and they, they feel comfortable with their operations through February.
That doesn't make sense.
What, what grant are you talking about? Cause she did, I did get an email from her the other day saying that they were working on an application, but.
Yeah, I, we have not received it as of yet.
We, we have a deadline on applications for grants, so correct?
Yeah, sure.
So what's the total amount of the grant? Pardon? What's the total amount of that grant? Far as combining, it's two hundred and fifty thousand or is it a hundred and fifty thousand? Or if my memory serves me correctly, it's, it's running about a hundred and sixty-five.
So last year, we set a limit. So last year, we set a limit, and do we remember what that limit was?
I am not aware of last year's limits, sir.
I feel like it was like fifty thousand, but I, or forty thousand, but I could be.
Can, can we find what the cost side?
Thing, it was just per applicant.
I think that we, we capped it at two fifty, I thought was what we were.
Total, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
That people could only request up to fifty thousand, which is also.
It's a collective, right?
Huh?
With everybody, right?
Yeah, and, and we made that really clear.
And there was an individual cap as well.
Yeah. And we made that really clear with the Golden Link too. So I don't know if that's been part of the conversation or not.
I think we need to um, check that out before we.
I know that, as mentioned before, the Golden Link did submit a budget and I have asked them to resubmit. That budget, I have not received that resubmission as of, as of today.
My question is, I know we set a deadline and we put all that out there verbally in the meetings, but did any of that communication go out into the community? Because I have not seen it, that does not mean that it has not happened. My question is, were people?
And DCDP, I'm surprised that they haven't submitted something.
That's just why I'm asking, I mean, clearly we're at the deadline, we're at that point, I'm just wondering for us learning next year, I don't want people coming in at end of November. Submitting or asking for money or they're coming in in January, February and clearly hasn't been budgeted, I'm, like, we're at that point, but I'm just saying, next year. Make note, like for Keenan, like that, maybe that's something that we should be putting out there.
I can send an email to council tomorrow, I can verify with Tina the totals of anything.
Yeah.
And what was the deadline, do we know what the deadline was?
Wasn't that like August thirtieth or something? I could be making stuff up.
It was.
I'm just really surprised because a lot of our normal individuals who've requested money, the fact that they haven't requested is shocking, to be honest. So I'm just wanting to make sure that they were actually clearly communicated that this was the deadline and this was what was needed to be submitted by a certain date. Cause it's a lot of people that have not submitted.
Is, is it the Kirkston area community fund?
No, yeah.
No, that's a different, that's a different thing. It was, I don't think it's anything that we have a name or have advertised or even have it posted anywhere, Wendy, like to be honest. I mean, I know one, somebody said the deadline a few weeks ago and I had not remembered that discussion happening, that doesn't mean it didn't happen, I'm just saying.
I wanna say last year, we had a deadline of, did somebody say August thirty first?
I wanna say we.
Well, I mean, like, I felt like we were discussing it at this point last year.
Yeah, I think it was August something that we post deadline for anybody looking for that.
I mean, I, I, I think this information is in some of the past meeting notes, if we could find that somehow. Cause we all agreed at that time of what it, what the cap was gonna be as a collective and what the cap was gonna be as individual.
Yeah, I just sent myself and Tina an email for the morning, so I'll get, I'll get those numbers.
I said here and asked this question as if you were here last year and you would know it.
Further discussion? Here, Ignan, can I roll call, please?
Call?
Hi.
Menard?
Hi.
Hibma?
Hi.
Jordy?
Hi.
Fisher?
Hi.
Briggs?
Hi.
Cavalier?
Hi.
Alt?
Hi.
Okay, motion carries, right, we are adjourned. Every October doesn't come back until snow's gone. Todd was appointed quite a few years ago and he enjoyed being on. On the planning and he was more than willing to come back and. Serve out Brian's term and possibly, he's eligible for another term after Phil's out Brian, but. He works with Great Plains Natural Gas. He, he did very well when he was on. Planning before, did his homework and he enjoyed being on and he's willing to come back.
I think he'd be a good candidate, so.
So consensus is? Good? Good? All right, thank you, we are adjourned.